Okay, we'll have a moment of slide meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hereby call this meeting of the Montegay County Commission to order. It is Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renato Cor. Good morning.
Good morning. We have 14 exonerations for 14,718.64 minutes for November 6th, 2024. Vouchers, General County Fund, 363,571.1. Magistrate Court, 117.50. 911, $254. Chestnut Ridge Park, 6,876.53. Camp Muffley, $5,047.56. Mason Dixon Park, 6,005.2164. Mon County Center, 4,008.3850. Assessor's valuation, 2,009.8848. Payroll, $1,888,873.15. ARPA, 23,200. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 16,567.56. Chestnut Ridge Park, 571.21. Mon County Center, 759.85. Assessor's valuation, $160 for a voucher total of $2,320,346.09. No budget provisions to approve. Visitors' vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the website and fiduciary orders for November 13th, 2024.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent and agenda items as presented?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any additional fiduciary items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of new employee personnel changes. Mecha 911. Good morning, Jimmin.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. I want to introduce Jamie Goldsmith. She'll be starting November 16th at a starting salary of $3,425.10 per month.
Move to approve the new employee for Mecha 911 as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other personnel?
Yeah.
Okay. Now we'll open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, please raise their hand, come forward and state their name.
Hello.
Morning.
Morning. Mary Ann Foles, 828 Bloody Run Road.
Today's topic of the day is the homeless situation. Now, I know that there was a fire. Some people are speculating that may have been caused by some of the unhoused. I don't know. But I do know that within a couple of miles of where I live, which is in the county, there's at least 50 people living in encampments in the woods. And with the winter coming up, I do expect that there's going to be fires. I mean, I know that they burn fires right now, and it's just a matter of time until something gets out of hand. So just given where we are with the situation with the unhoused and the fact that we know that we're having an increasing problem, and, you know, from my perspective, I don't care if I'm standing here or if I'm sitting up there, I want to address this problem. I want to passionately get involved and help resolve the unhoused situation in our county. So what I am asking for is an official committee from you all. I'd like to head it to begin. I'll get people to come together. I will try to, I'll give you reports on a routine basis, and I just want a chance to try to solve this problem. Again, I don't, you know, I didn't run for any kind of power trip. That's just not me. If you know me, you know that's not why I ran. I ran to resolve our issues. You guys are going to keep working on economic development. That's awesome. Keep doing the stuff that's working. I want to work on the things that we have issues with today, and this was a very high priority for me. It's still as high a priority for me to help both the people who are living out there as well as our residents who are negatively impacted, as well as people along the rail trail, and I owe you pictures, but along the rail trail, who are living there and struggling, or living along there either illegally or nearby and dealing with this issue. So I would like an official committee. You know, guys, think about it. Maybe next week, give me an answer on whether or not you would support a committee for the homeless, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, Bill.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Just a quick update on the District Four.
You should tell people who you are, Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Austin, Executive Director of Morgantown Montegay MPO. And I want to thank the County Commission for providing me with the invitation to the District Four Open House yesterday. It was sparsely attended by members of the elected officials from the various counties. I was the only local government official at the meeting. There was a contractor and me, and 16, approximately 16, I didn't count them, DOH employees. It was a very good opportunity, though, to open up a discussion with District Four about the needs of the MPO and the community. They were very forthcoming with the current issues with maintenance in Montegay County and discussed it a lot. In fact, they will send me their PowerPoint, which I will share with you all and also with the rest of the MPO. They've made a great deal of progress on staffing here in Mon County for the maintenance. I think they're down only one or two employees and had been fully up to staff, but, you know, people move on. But they are right at their quota for the number of employees they need for maintenance in the county, and they have documented some good progress with the ditching in Montegay County and around the rest of the district. They did relate that they understood that the county had been behind, and they are working to catch up with their core maintenance program, and they're making good progress with that. So it was a great opportunity to have discussions with Mr. Gaskins, the new district manager, and we've opened up a dialogue. We had a really good discussion there, and they were very open and forthcoming, and I do appreciate the opportunity they provided with the Open House.
Thank you very much, Bill. I appreciate, while you're here, because I'm not sure if you were staying for the whole meeting, but I'll just tell you now. One for the public, we weren't at the meeting because we were canvassing. We started at nine in the morning and didn't finish till three, so we couldn't commit to being at the meeting, so I do appreciate DOH having that meeting. I did want to just thank you for forwarding me some information on a concern that someone had on Brookhaven Road. I believe that person may visit our next MMPO meeting. So if you would put that in your notes for us to kind of have, be able to speak to a summary of her concerns if she brings them, if she shows up at that meeting, or speak to them anyhow, whether she shows up or not.
Yeah, I'll make them attempt to be at the meeting next Thursday, I'm, I'm sorry, next Wednesday, and speak with that person, be happy to relate what's going on to her if needed. Also, just a reminder, we do have-
She's going to be at the MMPO meeting.
Oh, she'll be at the MMPO?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking the County Commission meeting.
Yeah.
We'll be prepared to discuss that.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. I'll go ahead and close comments from the public session of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is receipt of proposals submitted, response to RFP 2024 MCC 005, expansion of broadband network in Montegay County. Commissioner Arnett, you have the three responses that we have received by the due date of time, which was 10 o'clock this morning. For the record, if you would just note the names on the three different proposals.
Well, this is written, let's ask it. Deanna, oh, okay, this is from Comcast, Deanna Trent sent. This one is from Frontier, and this final one is from, I'm not going to open it, but I guess I have to see the cover letter. It's from Prodigy, because it's from the third one.
So we have three responses from Comcast, Frontier, and Prodigy, and I would entertain a motion to accept the proposals and to forward on to the evaluation team for a recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And this is a really quick evaluation period because we'd have to have these funds obligated if we're using the rest of our broadband ARPA dollars, and we'd have to have them obligated by the end of the year. So we'll do that evaluation process pretty quickly and hopefully come back with recommendations to negotiate, so.
Great.
Next item on the agenda is grants. Colleen Coon, Commission Office Manager. Good morning.
Good morning, Colleen.
Good morning. Okay, so I have requests for reimbursement. The first one is for the Saki Purpose Area 1 grant, and that one is in the amount of The second one is the Saki Purpose Area 3 grant, and that one is in the amount of $15,813.80.
Move to approve the president signing the grant documents as presented.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Correspondence. Financial advisory agreement with Cruz and Associates in relation to the modification of certain terms related to the Series 2023A Senior Tax Increment Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds for University Town Center Development District Number Four. This was an engagement agreement consistent with every time we utilize Cruz to do some analysis in regards to bonds issuance, and we're noting it as correspondence. Any items not on the agenda?
Yeah, we've had several come in yesterday. Got a request from the Scotts Run Volunteer Fire Department to tap into the contingency fund from the county fire protection monies that were distributed by the state. The request is for $13,072.70, and that's to do some repairs on their ladder truck that they have. So I just want to note that under correspondence.
Okay.
We also got a letter from the American Legion Riders regarding their fifth annual statewide ride for charity that would support the American Legion Mount Air Boy State and Rhode Island Girl State Program. They're requesting a donation of $1,500. That's all that I have. I think Commissioner Bloom may have something.
I think all three of us this morning received a letter from a former employee of the Rainbow House located on Scott Avenue, Mon County. There are some really disturbing accusations being made, and I think we need to look at it and then consider passing this on to the state and have them investigate. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no other correspondence. Unfinished business. None. New business. Consideration of requisition number 96 for University Town Center Economic Opportunity District Subaccount.
This is for the Sales Tax District, 948,806.35.
Move to approve requisition 96 as presented.
Second.
Okay. And that amount that was quoted by our administrator, the balance of the proceeds was a million 58,362.51, less statutory lien of $100,000 and a tax admin fee of $9,556.16. Right now, we're trending about 2.08% behind last year, which means about $252,000 and collections of probably about 4.2 million. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consideration to approve additional compensation for the assessor of Montegay County is indicated by the letter received from Matthew Erby, West Virginia State Tax Commissioner, that the assessor has substantially completed the additional dues pursuant to West Virginia Code 776B.
Move to approve the additional compensation as requested by the state according to the code, second.
Second.
Okay. And that additional compensation for this class of county is $15,000. There are a number of 6A lists, a number of things that had to have been accomplished to, to, there's about six things in the list that he had to accomplish, and then the State Tax Commissioner certifies that, and that certification is the letter that we're speaking of. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consideration of a response to Kevin Fagan, Legal Counsel for the United Mine Workers of America regarding the correspondence on October 28th, 2024. I have a letter to Mr. Fagan with, as the commission is desired, I'll go ahead and read this, and then we'll take up a motion. This letter is addressed to Kevin Fagan, General Counsel, United Mine Workers of America, and Michael Peyton, District 31, Vice President. Gentlemen, the purpose of this letter is to respond to Mr. Fagan's letter dated October 18th, 2024. In part, his letter requested that the Montegay County Commission recognize the United Mine Workers of America as the collective bargaining representative of the employees in the assessor's office. By letter dated May 22nd, 2024, the commission refused a similar request. Our position has not changed. We agree with you that the National Labor Relations Act does not apply to state or political subdivisions thereof. West Virginia law, in turn, does not recognize the rights of public employees to go on strike or be represented by unions for purposes of collective bargaining, mediation, or arbitration. See West Virginia Code 18545A, A2. Public employees in West Virginia have no right, statutory or otherwise, to engage in collective bargaining, mediation, or arbitration, and any work stoppage or strike by public employees is hereby declared to be unlawful. Jefferson County Board of Education versus Jefferson County Education Association, 393 SE 2D 6653, West Virginia, 1990. In addition, public employees from that case, public employees have no right to strike in the absence of express legislation or in the very least appropriate statutory provisions for collective bargaining, mediation, and arbitration. While the West Virginia Legislature could have provided these rights for public employees, it purposely chose not to do so. By declining to voluntarily recognize the U M W A as the bargaining representative of the assessor's employees, the commission is acting consistently with West Virginia public policy. While public employees may decide to support an organization that does not give that organization the right to represent public employees for the purposes of collective bargaining, the commission is not willing to voluntarily give representational rights to third-party organizations when those rights are not, sorry, when those rights are not expressly provided by the statute of West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals. Additionally, as the commission previously informed the U M W A, we do not believe it is prudent to include a third party in dealings with, between us and our employees. This would limit our flexibility in dealing with our employees and increase costs as part of that process. We simply do not believe that this is in the best interest of the county, our employees, or our citizens. That reality is likely the reason why nearly all political subdivisions in West Virginia have voluntarily, have not voluntarily agreed to recognize unions or other organizations to represent their employees for the purpose of collective bargaining or otherwise. In conclusion, the commission does not and will not recognize the U M W A as the collective bargaining representative for the employees of the assessor's office. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Montegay County Commission, and it's to be signed by all three commissioners that have approved. Motion to approve the letter as described?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration to approve subrecipient agreements for the 13 fire departments that we are receiving disbursements from the county fire protection and all county fire protection monies received from the West Virginia Legislature.
You all have looked this over. We've gone through a couple of different drafts.
Yeah.
They're already printed and ready to go out as soon as you all give your approval.
Okay. And these are based off of the amounts that we approved a while back, but there's an agreement for each of these organizations, which they have to sign.
Yeah. And I mean, if you want to, if we want to go through the payment and reporting requirements, initial payment will be made to the subrecipient in a lump sum amount after the subrecipient agreement is fully executed by all parties and returned to the MCC. Expenditures by subrecipient must comply with current and future statutory and regulatory requirements imposed by the West Virginia Legislature, the West Virginia State Auditor's Office, and the West Virginia Secretary of Homeland Security. Each subrecipient must submit to the MCC an annual expenditure report no later than June 30th of each year detailing the use of distributed funds. Any lapse in reporting will result in delays of future disbursements of funding. Future deposits by the West Virginia Treasurer's Office will be distributed in the manner set forth in this subrecipient agreement and be subject to the same statutory and regulatory requirements.
Okay. Move to approve the subrecipient agreements as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. At the approval of the commission, I would like to go to Agenda Item G first, and then we'll take those other two items because they may be a little more lengthy.
That's fine.
So Agenda Item G is consideration of the county commission meeting schedule regarding the Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, and New Year's Eve holidays. What we had discussed in staff reports is to cancel the meeting for 11/27/24, which would be the day before Thanksgiving, given that our administrator and one of the commissioners will be out of town, so there's not a lot of business that goes on, so that's one date. For the Christmas week, I believe we were proposing to move the 12/25 meeting to 12/23, so that'd be moved from Wednesday to Monday of that week. And same thing with the following week, move the New Year's Day meeting to 12/30, so move from Wednesday to Monday.
Okay. Yeah, move to cancel the 11/27 meeting to move the meeting to 12/23 and subsequently to 12/30 for the one for New Year's as presented. And also, I would move that the president be available to sign vouchers during that time in the event that something's needed and we're not here to approve it.
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Anything else we need to point out, Renett?
No. I'll make the notification to all the departments.
Okay. We want to get this out sooner rather than later because it's, obviously, we're not going to meet on Christmas and, Christmas and New Year's, nor Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve, so. We have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the next item on the agenda is, back to Agenda Item E.
Could, point of order, could we do reports 11 and 12 because ENF will probably have to go in executive session before? That way, people don't have to sit around.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go to reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors?
Okay.
Okay. Seeing none, reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, I was fortunate to take 48 hours and go to Philadelphia, but I do want to state that I did go to Indian Town Gap National Cemetery, which is in Lebanon Valley, Pennsylvania. It is home of 60,000 soldiers, 677 acres. I was very fortunate for the first time since my father died. He was born August 7th, 1919, died March 22nd, 2005, that I was able to see his grave. And I did not realize that they were all buried there. I thought it was just going to be a little medallion. But to be there and see, you know, the entire facility is unbelievable. And I also want to say, when leaving, we drove through Lebanon Valley College and literally has exactly like Morgantown, West Virginia, you drive right through the center of it. And I think that we need to look at how they have taken care of their community and how the roads are through the college, and it was very impressive. But I do want to thank my family for allowing me to go there and seeing this, and very proud of my father, who is buried with the other soldiers in World War II and who defended our country. Thank you.
Along that note, I too would like to recognize the sacrifice that all our veterans made for us, specifically pointing out my grandfather, Army Sergeant Chester O, who landed in France and pursued through Germany. So my personal hero, and thank you for all that, all that they have given, and as they say, you know, some gave all, but none gave, or all gave some, but none, some gave all. I always get that wrong. We did participate in canvassing yesterday and certify the election. Again, a shout out to the county clerk's office, who continues to keep those elections fair and efficient, and we got out of there in a timely manner, and everything was shown to be done properly. And just on a personal note, thanks to all the well wishers and condolences that have been brought my way upon the death of my father. I greatly appreciate it and appreciate the time that the commission allowed me to step back for a couple of days so I could, I could attend to family matters in that regard, so thank you.
Since our last meeting, last Friday, we had staff reports and then I had a broadband prebid call. That was the last opportunity for potential offers to ask questions and which culminate with the proposals we received today. Monday was Veterans Day, as mentioned by both of my fellow commissioners, and I do want to commend all of our veterans for the service that they've provided to our country. It's always kind of hard to find the right words that don't sound cheesy and just really, really just convey the thanks for the people that served. But sincerely, I reached out to every vet I knew on Monday and let them know that I really appreciated their service. Yesterday, we did have canvassing, and it did go very smoothly. It started about nine, and we finished up about three. There were no substantial issues. I am, I continue to be amazed at the number of individuals that show up to vote in Mon County that aren't registered here. We had about 300, almost 400 provisional ballots, and we didn't accept about a quarter of those, and the main reason being they weren't registered to vote. There were some, and I appreciate the clerk's office of being proactive. Some of those, approximately 43 that showed up at the election center, they went ahead and got their information and got their signature and got everything they needed to go ahead and register them, the votes, so that they won't go through this next time. But, so I really appreciate their proactive actions. Today's a regular day. This afternoon, I have a broadband call. Tomorrow is the second Thursday of the month, so that's generally my map executive board meeting got pushed back a week, but I still have my Red Team meeting tomorrow and then Development Authority. Friday, we have staff reports, and our broadband team will continue going through the evaluation of these proposals. Monday, I have another broadband call. Tuesday, there's risk pool training, and then we have our tag up with HR in the evenings of volunteer fire department meeting. So that's all I have.
Can I add one? I forgot, I forgot to respond to Ms. Foles. I appreciate your interest. I would strongly recommend that you contact the West Virginia Coalition and Homelessness, United Way and Catholic Charities, that are the state-recognized social service agencies dealing with it. They do have a committee already, and you possibly could get on that. I think that would be an excellent idea. Thank you. So.
Okay. So seeing that, we'll go back to Item E. I believe it's E, yes. Item E on our agenda. To consider the adoption by the county commission of a resolution and order which would authorize the execution and delivery of a 10th supplemental indenture of trust between the county commission and West Banko Bank Incorporated, the trustee, for the purposes of extending transfer to each deadline set forth in the eighth supplemental indenture of trust between the county commission and the trustee pursuant to which the county commission issued its subordinate special district excise tax revenue and improvement bonds, Series 2023A, for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District, and subordinate special district excise tax convertible capital appreciation revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2023B, University- refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2023B, University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District.
I would like to move to go into executive session because, to get some more information, 6-9A-4B, nine and 12, with the County Commission and the individuals pertinent. Now, I don't know if you want to say each name or not.
Yeah, we'll do that in a second. Do I have a second for that?
Yeah, second.
Okay, so a little bit further discussion. I'm going to read Agenda Item F, too, because that's what we're also going to discuss.
Yes, yes.
F is consider the adoption by the County Commission of a resolution and order which would authorize the execution and delivery of a special supplemental indenture of trust between the County Commission and a trustee for the purpose of extending the tranches release deadline set forth and indenture of trust between the County Commission and a trustee pursuant to which County Commission issued its senior tax increment revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2023A, Development District Number Four, University Town Center. For the summary of what these items are that we're dealing with, these bond issues had tranches set up where certain items had to be met for the release of funds. Some of those items have not occurred yet, and there's a request to extend the tranche deadline, which is a very, these are very complicated bonds, so that creates a whole list of complicated actions that the Commission needs to consider. So that in a nutshell is the summary of what we're working on. So we're just trying to get more information. This item just came on our radar screen within the past week, so there's an incredible amount of work that's been done by our lawyers on both sides, financial consultants, to get us information, which we haven't been privy to yet. So we need that information to act on these items. So I would ask that the, our Commission Manager would let the lawyer, Rob Steptoe from Cruz and Associates, Carrie Cecil from Frost Brown, Jason from Steptoe, and, I'm sorry.
Miranda.
Miranda. Miranda from Westridge.
And Ryan Lynch.
Go ahead. Ryan Lynch is on the teams. He's on the teams' screen back in the room, but.
Michael Lambert.
And Michael Lambert's also on the team. So those are the individuals that will be participating. If you go ahead and let them into the back conference room. We have a first and a second. All those in favor of going into executive session?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Okay, we're in executive session.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we had two remaining agenda items that we needed to deal with. In relation to Agenda Item E, to consider the adoption by the County Commission of a resolution and order which would authorize the execution and delivery of a tenth supplemental indenture of trust between the County Commission and Wesbanko Inc., the trustee, for the purpose of extending the tranches release deadline set forth in the eighth supplemental indenture of trust between the County Commission and a trustee pursuant to which the County Commission issued its subordinate special district excise tax revenue and improvement bonds, Series 2023A, University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District, and subordinate special district excise tax convertible capital appreciation revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2023B, University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District. What's the will of the Commission?
Make a motion that we approve subject to conditions.
No, no, I move the table till next Wednesday.
I'm sorry.
I just remembered. Move the table till next Wednesday.
Yeah, I got my dyslexic letters mixed up. I second Commissioner Bloom's motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. In regards to-
There's no action on.
Item F. To consider, I just want people to know what the agenda item is. To consider the adoption of the County Commission of a resolution and order which would authorize the execution and delivery of a second supplemental indenture of trust between the County Commission and trustee for the purpose of extending the tranches release deadline set forth and the indenture of trust between the County Commission and the trustee pursuant to which County Commission issued its senior tax increment revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2023A, Development District Number Four, University Town Center. What is the will of the Commission?
Take no action.
Yeah, to take no action, move the table until the next meeting.
No, no, just move the table. Just take no action.
Then there's no motion to-
We have a motion to take no action. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We need to-
Absent any other items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Suspended.